Hi, this is the zoning board of appeals. I am Janice Tatarca. I am joined by other members of the board today. Hugo Perdomo, Joseph Mahoney, Marilyn Vega Torres, Joseph Mahoney, Joseph, sorry, Arthur Arsenal, I already got Joe, Arthur Arsenal, and then John De Priest and Hector Vellas, who make sure that we are where we need to be when we need to be. We're going to take things slightly out of order today since we're waiting for one other of our people. The first thing we're going to do is take 2023-09, 8385 Library Street. Mary Teixeira, which is a request for an extension. She's asked to vote to continue that to the next meeting. Do I have a motion to do that? Made by Marilyn, second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
2023-13, 81 Library Street. Mary Teixeira, same request to vote to continue to the next meeting. Motion made by Arthur.
Yes.
Second by Hugo. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now going to move to case 2024-07, which is 106 Webster Avenue, Hector Lopez, for special permit in variance seeking approval to construct a rear addition to create three additional bedrooms, which does not meet the minimum requirements for off-street parking and side-street setback. Does any appear on that?
Yes.
Make sure you're speaking to the microphone, please. And if anybody needs translation, there's a gentleman in the back. He will provide that to you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So, yes, so this is for a special permit for...
Say your name again, please.
Oh, my name is Nelson. Nelson, last name is Argueta.
Mm-hmm. And your address, please.
165 Byron Street in East Boston.
Okay. So, John, we've heard from the, what did the planning board say on this one?
Planning board recommended approval with standard conditions.
Okay. One of the things that we just, you know, like anything else, this is a variance involved. So, we'll, I'm gonna, it's, we're not, I'm gonna open it up to the public, but I want to understand that there are four requirements for a variance that you need to meet. So, we're gonna have to go through those, but why don't you just very quickly do an overview of what it is that you're proposing?
Okay, yeah, sure. So, like, so basically, the rooms are existing, all right? So, basically, what we do is we extend the three feet because the room, I don't know if Hector had any chance to get the pictures from those rooms. No, you never got those, huh?
Do you have other pictures, John?
Ah, yes.
Yeah, I got block, oh, he probably, he probably does.
So, you want to basically take those rooms that are porches now and turn them into bedrooms? Is that, was what, is that what you're...
So, if you go back, if you go, that's the door going down to the basement, the back stairway. So, that's, that's the rooms. As you can see, the rooms are long enough, but the width is less than five feet. So, basically, what we do is we add in three, three feet to the existing rooms. That's it.
You, that's what you want to do?
Correct.
Now, you understand, in wanting to do that, you, that's what, that's why you need a variance, correct? In doing that, you need a variance, and it might be very difficult for you to meet, potentially could be difficult for you to meet the requirements of a variance. I'm just saying that. So, we'll talk about that as we go forward. But are there any questions before I open it up to the public? Okay, this is still open to public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this matter? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of the hearing. So, in order, I have concerns about their ability to meet some of the variance requirements here. Wait, John, what is it that we need the variances for? Remind us again.
Okay. So, the variance is for a side yard setback because they are extending the existing non-conformity by expanding to the rear.
Right. So, if you didn't expand this, you wouldn't need a variance, and it would be a lot easier to approve this, just so you know. But if you, all right, so, let me tell you what my concern is, guys. Here's the issue. I'm gonna read each, each one, and you have to tell us if you can make it. The variance is sought because of soil conditions and shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting the zoning district in which it's located. In other words, you have to add that extension. You have no choice but to get closer to the lot line because of the shape of the land. Can, is that why you're doing it? I mean, you, there, tell me.
So, can we just renovate the rooms? I mean, like, the way are right now, yes?
If you don't extend them for the three feet, then you just need the special permits, correct?
Yes.
Then you don't have to do this, and then we don't have to have this conversation. We can just talk about the special permit. If you decide that you want to add the three feet, then we have to meet every single one of these, and I think you're gonna have a problem meeting number one, in my opinion, my personal.
I see, I see.
You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
So, if you, if you keep the room without adding the three feet, then we're just having special permits and we're, then you...
Yeah. So, let's, let's keep it, I mean, the way it is right now. So, basically, you know, he needs those rooms as a family rooms and...
But they don't, it's not that they can't be family rooms, it's just you can't add the three feet. You can make it into a bedroom. We're not saying you can't make it into a bedroom. What we're saying is you just can't make them bigger.
Okay. Got you.
So, we're not saying you can't have it to be a bedroom. That's not, that's not what the problem is. The problem is, because you're getting closer to the lot line, you've created a variance.
I see, I see, okay.
Yeah, and, yeah.
All right. Sounds good.
So, do you understand, Joe?
I understand, yeah.
Yeah.
What is the size, the current size that it, that it's at right now? Is that large enough for a bedroom? Code-wise?
From a building code perspective, I don't know, because I'm not sure about the building code. Let's go back here and look.
But it can be an enclosed room, which is no, you don't have any problem with it being an enclosed room.
Right.
Which then they can use.
Yeah, I don't know if there is a minimum size for a bedroom. I tend to doubt it, but I just don't know.
But there's no minimum size for a room.
Right.
So, the only thing that makes a bedroom a bedroom is if it has a closet.
Closet and a window.
Closet and a window, right. So, do you understand what we're saying? So, we're trying to make it easier for you.
Correct.
Because otherwise, I think, I would have to say no. And you don't, I don't want to have to say no, because I think, I don't, I think what you're proposing makes sense.
I understand.
Guys, thoughts as I'm babbling here?
About the variance?
About avoiding the variance.
Oh, I think, I think we, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think we should try to avoid the variance, for sure.
And then, and then all we're doing is dealing with a special permit, which we, which we can do with a great deal of discretion.
So, avoiding the, avoiding the variance...
So, they wouldn't extend the room to three feet. So, they would just build, they would basically enclose the room that's there already, the space that's there already, without making the room larger. And if they don't make the room larger, there's no need for a variance. So, then it, then all it needs is a special permit.
Right. The variance is required because it is, it is, it is a non-conforming structure in that it is already too close to the side yard. Under our zoning, if you extend a non-conforming structure by continuing that existing conformity, you need a variance.
Right.
So, if they don't, if they don't expand it, if it doesn't get expanded, you no longer need that variance. You'll still need the special permits, but you won't need the variance.
Yeah.
So, are you okay with that?
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Well, think of it this way. Either, if you, if you're not okay with it, then we're probably not gonna be able to do anything.
Yeah. I will, I will explain everything to the owner, but basically, I mean, he, he needs to get those rooms renovated anyway, like, with drywall and hardwood floors and all that stuff.
And if he, and he can do all that with, if we approve a special permit, as long as he doesn't make it a bigger room.
Okay. Sounds good.
Arthur, Hugo, you look like you have a question. No?
No.
So, do we have a motion to approve this without the variance? Or we have a motion on this? Without the, without extension? Without extension?
I will make a motion to, I will make a motion to accept the special permit for 2024-07 with the standard conditions as, as applicable and still limited to one space, correct, John? Does it get limited to one space?
It's not, no, this is a, this is, that's not, this isn't a parking...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Just with stand, sorry, just for standard conditions.
As, and with the, with the, and no, without allowing for the extension larger than is there is now.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Sorry to make it confusing, but it actually was easier for you.
All right. So, so what I need right now, so how can I fill it out, an application to, for the building permit?
At this point, I have, I have to write up a decision, file with the city clerk. There's a 20-day appeal period. The owner will get a copy of the, a record that a decision has been made and with instructions on how to proceed.
En holanda, riscata.
It can take a couple of weeks.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. The next case is 2024-08, 43 Everett Avenue, Juan Portillo, for special permit seeking approval to establish a convenience store. Is Mr. Portillo here?
My name is Juan Portillo.
43 Everett Avenue in Chelsea.
46 Everett Avenue, Chelsea.
I'm here to see if you can grant the permit to open the convenience store.
And this, this, that's the last, so we only, this is only a special permit, John, correct?
Correct.
And what did the planning board say?
Planning board recommended approval with standard conditions, a condition to provide my department with a signage plan, and that the, the door on the rear be marked as for emergency egress only.
Can you go through those, one of those, one at a time, so they can translate them easier for the gentleman?
So, standard conditions. That provide my department with a signage plan, exterior signs. And that the door in the rear be marked for emergency purposes only.
The sign is already there.
Okay.
This is an emergency exit.
Okay, then you've, then, fine, you've already met it.
Okay, so, is there any, do you have any questions before I open this up to the public?
So, nothing's changed, right? In regards to the, what he plans on doing with business, still the...
No.
Nothing at all.
I think since last time.
Is there parking spaces in this, for this store?
Yeah, there's parking, for six cars.
Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? This is still open? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this hearing. John, does the planning department have any particular recommendations on this, other than what you identified?
No, the, the planning board's recommendations are the department's recommendations as well.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this?
Oh, can we just ask the hours of operation?
Oh, sure, of course. What are your hours of operation?
From 6:00 to 6:00 P.M.
Is that standard, John? Six, okay, all right.
That's every day?
Every day? Seven days?
Yes, every day.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept, I make a motion to accept 2024-08, 43 Everett Ave., Juan Portillo, standard conditions as applicable, signage plan, and monitor rear door as emergency exit opening.
Okay. Do I have a second? Marilyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. Oh, yeah, but Arthur, that's just what it said, yeah. Yeah. So, the next one, Arthur, you're not doing the next one, so you're, because you weren't here. So, 2024-05. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, then we're all set. You won.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. 2024-05, 222 Webster Ave., Paolo Evangelista, special permit seeking approval for driveway opening to create parking spaces, which per the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance is not permitted within the required front yard setback, nor within five feet of any wall containing ground floor or basement windows, not within five feet of, nor with, not within five feet of the side lot line.
Good evening. My name is Paolo Evangelista, the 222 Webster Ave.
Okay. John, what did the planning board have to say?
Planning board had, was concerned about two parking spaces in the front. They recommended denial.
Okay. I'm gonna open this up. Do you have any questions before I open it up to the public, and then we can have some discussion? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this hearing. So, Mr. Evangelista, how open are you to compromising to just one car in the part, in the front?
Yeah, I can, I can work with one, but I just, I brought some pictures here from, there's already on a street, house with the same, like, can I approach and show you the picture?
Sure, you can, you can provide that to John.
There's like, houses with the same size space that I have, and it has the same option on it.
Okay. Thank you.
On the street.
Yeah, and it looks like, it looks like cement, the whole way.
So, that we drive it from the street.
Okay, you, go talk to us on the, from the microphone. I'm sorry. You need to be mic'd up. So, let me ask a question. When, if you build these two parking spaces, are you gonna have any green space on your front lawn?
No, that is more, that's why I only ask for two, because I have a room for more, but I only want two.
John, do you have pictures? So, oh, this is the one that's, yeah.
This is the site.
Yeah, there's, so if you put two parkings, oh, and so, you're gonna, so basically, you would put the whole parking spaces right there, and you would have, right next to your, the stairs?
I, I, I talked to John, and we, I draw, a new draw, that's like, their new plan. It's right there, example, how it would be.
It's the same? I think they're all slightly different. Let's take a look, just a second. They're basically, that, given the picture you have, that, this is, this is like, almost in the front yard up to the, up to the door.
Well, this is the revised plan. You may recall that in the original plan, the two spaces were centered on the lot.
Right.
Here, they've been moved over to the right, so this is one space here, second space here, and here's this walkway to the doors.
Right. Which maintain, yes, right, so, because you're not, you're not moving the steps, right?
No.
Is there any green on the side of the steps? Is there any, what's on the other side of the steps?
Just a little green space.
She forgot. Let me just, let me just...
Is she coming?
Aye, she didn't say. I'm gonna take one quick break, hold on.
Sure.
You wanna text her with this?
I thought with the phone.
Arthur's not looking, he's not voting.
Oh, that's why you're not participating.
She just, she's not, well, she's been sick. She's sick. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. So, so there's basically no green?
Other than this narrow strip here.
Guys, what do you have thoughts?
So, on the right-hand side, there looks, it looks like there's like a walkway as well, like, past the green. Does that walkway belong to the other house?
No, that belongs to mine.
That belongs to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That belongs to me.
Okay. And that's not gonna be removed, or that's gonna be part of, are you gonna take that space?
That's gonna be the parking, yeah.
As part of the parking?
Yes, yes.
So, you're gonna eliminate that walkway?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. And you're bringing, is the spa, it's gonna be right up to your lot line?
Exactly, yes.
John, based on those measurements, do two vehicles fit there? Based on, like, the compact cars?
Well, based on the plans he submitted, yes, they would fit.
That light will be in the way, John? That light has been removed, or replaced?
Well, the light will probably have to be moved.
Yeah, the light will be removed. I'm gonna put the light on the other side here to illuminate the stairs. The light will, will no longer be there, but it's not functional anyway, because I think the old, the old, the old owner had it like for when they built the house, but it's not working.
I think even one is a little intrusive there, but, what are your thoughts?
Is that a handicap?
Oh, that, remember, that was the one they said that was, the person lived there before, and they never took it down.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Right? Isn't that the handicap spot was the one that was from the private tenant? They didn't change it.
Right.
What do you think, guys?
I think two would be too much. I'm, I'm agreed with one.
So, I think what, so you need all of us to agree, and I think some of us don't, we think that two would be too much there. The problem, and, and, so, you could, I would potentially recommend that you have one, but I'm gonna tell you, the problem with that is, if you do that, and you get relief from parking, then now you can't get a sticker for your other car.
You cannot get...
The city council's rules are, they can't get a sticker for the new car. So, if they have two cars, and they have, they got relief from parking, so that one car would park in there, but then they wouldn't be able to get a sticker for the second car. Which kind of, you know...
But is it a family house, or one single one?
And you have two, no, but it's, but it's probably two cars.
Yeah, it's a two, two-building apartment, it's like, one...
Oh, it's two apartments?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's quite, one for each apartment, it's two apartments.
Yeah, but then one car wouldn't be able to get a sticker. So, I mean, so while I would argue that compromise make, is good, I just don't think that that benefits anybody, or him. It doesn't benefit the owner.
Yeah.
Because now, then he's, he's actually at a disadvantage. Now, he can get two stickers for his cars and park on the street, and now he would be able to have no stickers for his car, so technically couldn't be able to park overnight with one of them, or any of them. But the one that would need to be overnight, he couldn't be. So, it seems to, you know, from their point, you know, his point of view, it's like two or nothing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, he could make, Mr. Evangelista could make the choice to have one sticker, but I think that would be problematic.
Yeah.
Because to have, I mean, have one parking space...
If he spends money to asphalt the area, you know, and make it into a driveway for one vehicle, and he's gonna asphalt the whole entire grass area.
Either way, yeah.
And there's gonna be space, so it's like, why just make it one space, you know, like, doesn't make sense, because I would just say it two. I mean, it's a tight squeeze in comparison to the pictures that you provided, because some of the driveways are much larger than yours, the parking area is larger.
Especially in Webster, it's very busy.
And, and I would, and honestly, I think that if, if it didn't put his, him at a disadvantage.
Right.
For doing, for having only one, I would recommend one, but it, it doesn't seem fair to me that he should, he would lose the option for doing that when he's trying to get a car off the street. So, he's, he's getting a car off the street, but, but of, well, I mean, it's sort of a catch, it's actually one for one, because he's taking a car off the street, but he's also taking a parking spot. He's gonna have to get a curb cut over there.
Yeah.
So, it's parking on the street. You know, you know something, at this point, I'm leaning towards two. I'm leaning towards two.
What do you think?
I'm leaning towards two.
Well, he wants it, two would be the...
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's either two, or we deny it. I mean, because I don't think it's fair.
Now, with regards to the construction, is he digging out some of the dirt and putting up a wall, or is he just blacktopping?
Yeah, we're gonna dig it up and, and build the, a retain wall with cement block.
Okay. So, it'll be level with the sidewalk?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
And you know, even if we give you, we can't, we have nothing to do with curb cuts.
Yes.
So, even if we approve this, you have to get...
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, all right. That's not us at all. But you need all four of us to agree, so...
Yeah.
I know, it's a catch, because I don't like the concept of the cement in the front yard all the time, but he's not the only one there.
Yeah.
He's not the only one there.
He's not the only one, yeah. There's a lot of houses, not even a third like that.
So, it's up to the gentleman to think about what they wanna think.
I, I would rat the two.
Two. It's not an easy one. It's a, you don't, no, and there's no question. I mean, really, whatever you feel is appropriate, because I don't think there's an easy answer on this one, at all. I don't think there's an easy answer, one way or the other. You know, it would be an easy answer if he wouldn't lose the permit.
No.
I think then that would be an easy answer for me. And that easy answer would be one. Do we have a motion to grant the special permit?
I make a motion.
Second by me, Marilyn, second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, what do, now, we don't have, we don't have Joan, and we don't have me next month, so...
So, there will still be four people available.
So, you four?
Next month. Because your chairman's not here next month.
No, I know.
But there will still be four available, and you'd need a minimum of four in order to pass a special permit or a variance.
So, we, so we go forward. Okay?
So, the petition is no, there will only be four members available next month who can vote on these upcoming cases.
And now, the difference is, so, if for some reason it doesn't get decided in July, then I'm here in August, so that's why I'm gonna stay and listen to them, in case there's, in case it moves into August, but I'm not here in July, so, so we're gonna hear these cases. 2024-10-49 Harvard Street, Benny Bear AIA, for special permit in variance seeking approval to establish additional living space by constructing a rear addition and raising the third-floor roof to create living space at the former attic, which does not meet the minimum requirements for side yard setback, rear yard setback, and front yard setback. The property is already a non-conforming structure and must be granted a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure, and use only if it determines that such change shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the prior non-conforming structure. than the prior non-conforming structure. This is the first time we're hearing this, so, as you heard me say, we won't be deciding this today. This will go to the planning board on June twenty-fifth, here, in this, June twenty-fifth, and the next planning, the next zoning board meeting is the ninth of July. So, can you present your, introduce yourselves, please, and present your plan to us?
Good evening, my name is Benny Bear, I'm the architect for the project. With me here is the owner, Nelson Castro. Thank you for inviting us this evening. And, um, eh, the existing house is a legal, non-conforming, two-family residence. We propose to, uh, keep it as a two-family residence. Uh, we propose to construct an addition. The description is, uh, eh, I want to make the slight correction. Uh, it's, uh, there's a small addition in the front, and the addition in the rear is, eh, on top of an existing second-floor space. I would ask Mr. DePries if you can scroll one or two more pages down, uh, right here, thank you. You see, uh, right in the middle of this board, that the upper row in light blue, you know, those are the existing floor plans from left to right. Um, it's basement first, second, and attic, that's in light blue. And below it, in light orange, is a proposed conditions, basement first, second, and the attic is being converted to a third by reconfiguring, uh, the roof. You can see, in the existing condition, on the second floor, uh, there is a room in the back that projects out. The addition, uh, in the attic, uh, is, uh...
Why don't you, you know, something, it would be easier if you stood up and pointed to what you point, since you've got the thing in your hand, so... Take that with you.
It's gonna make the trip short. So, right here, this is the second floor. In the rear, there's a small patio here, but on the second floor, uh, above it, there is a room existing. So, we're proposing, um, in the attic, to construct a room above that. So this is part of the addition. The other part of the addition is we're going to, uh, extend to the front roughly, uh, to the extent of the existing entry, uh, vestibule here. We're gonna just, uh, straighten out the front wall and go up. So, uh, this is the, um, extent of the, uh, proposed work that we're, uh, like I said...
One thing to keep in mind, just as I'm looking at this, you know, you were here when we talked earlier about variances and the requirements, and this looks, this doesn't look dissimilar on the first floor to what we just talked about, which is extending space for reasons, I mean, this is a variance, so you're gonna have to meet the variance requirements.
I understand.
So if you extend space for the sake of extending space, that becomes a problem for us. I mean, that, that's, it's not a problem for us. It's a problem based on the rules of the variances.
Okay, uh, eh, eh, my understanding from, uh, the report that we received from the planning department is that, uh, all we need are special permits. If we are up against a variance, we, you know, eh, we would like to, uh...
No, you need variances, what, John, what do they need variances for?
Extending existing nonconformities.
Right, that's, eh, extending each of those buildings out, right, right, and that's exactly what the last case, we were, when we asked the gentleman to tell him that if he wanted to add those three feet, it created a problem for the variant, because there was nothing unique about the structure that required that.
Well, it's like, it's all special permits.
It's all special permits, okay, then that does, then that changes that, okay, then that's, that makes that easier? At least that's not an issue, okay?
Eh, okay.
Okay.
So, uh, um, so this is the extent of the proposed work. I'll be happy to, uh, answer any questions. I know, I, I'd like, you know, to mention one thing, I know that, uh, one of the concerns in the report from the planning department was, uh, the possibility of, um, eh, this property being used for short-term rentals or Airbnb. I have the assurances of the owner here, uh, that it is not the intent to do that, and we will accept, uh, conditions to this effect, uh, as part of the approval.
Before we open it to the public, do we have any comments? Questions?
So this is a single-family home? This is a single-family?
I'm sorry?
Eh, this is a single-family?
No, it's an existing two-family, it's going to remain two-family.
And it will remain a two-family, okay. So, just, just describe, I wanna just go up, so I'm just trying to figure, so you're basically squaring off everything? Is that what, is that what I'm seeing?
That's what we're doing.
And you're doing that the whole, so you're basically taking that and building it the whole way up, you're squaring off the bottom and going up?
We're going up, you know, you know, ironically, we're actually, all this results in a slight reduction in the building height because of the, eh, different roof configuration, but yes, we're taking the, uh, the attic, and we're going with straight walls out.
Okay, so, so, okay. Question?
Who's gonna have access to the basement when it's finished?
The basement is part of the first-floor unit.
I'm sorry?
The basement is part of the first-floor unit, living space.
So the first floor, how many bedrooms it has, right now?
There are two on the main level and, uh, one in the basement, right, yes.
Just, and there's three bedrooms in both units?
It's three bedrooms in the first-floor unit. Uh, this is the unit that, uh, Mr. Castro and his family live in, and they rent the upstairs.
So the upstairs will be, when, if, would this proposal will be four bedrooms?
It's going to end up being six.
Six, on the third floor?
Uh, second, second and third.
Now, does it, attic different, or will be a new apartment, or it belongs to the second floor?
The what?
The attic.
The attic is part of the second-floor unit, living space, yes.
So the basement in number one are part of the first-floor unit, and the second floor in the attic are part of the sec, of the second unit?
Correct.
And each one of those has three bedrooms?
No.
Each unit has three bedrooms?
Unit one is three bedrooms, in a proposed condition, unit two has a total of six.
Oh, oh, unit two does have six bedrooms?
Six bedrooms.
Why six bedrooms?
But they're existing.
Oh, they're existing?
But they're existing.
I'm sorry?
Are the six units in the, uh, upper unit existing?
No, eh, the...
No, you'll be adding more.
The propos, we, we are clearly adding bedrooms.
How many more bedrooms are you adding on the second unit?
Let me do the math.
I didn't, I, I, 'cause I'm having a... Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I didn't hear. I can hear what's there.
Currently, unit one has one bedroom in the basement and two bedrooms, uh, on the, uh, you know, on the main floor. So, in a proposed condition, it's going to still have, uh, eh, the same number of bedrooms. Unit two currently has two bedrooms on second floor and two bedrooms on the, uh, in the attic, right?
Yeah.
So it has a total of four currently, and we're going to increase that to a total of six with, um, eh, one, two, three, and one, two, three.
Why do you need six bedrooms?
I will...
For living, for user, the people, I have a big family, the user.
Could you identify yourself, please, for the record?
What's that?
Name and address, please.
Uh, the main...
Talk into, no, talk into the microphone.
Oh, Nelson Castro.
Yeah, and your address, he can talk to the way he's in.
Forty-nine Harvard Street.
Okay, thank you. So, why do you need six bedrooms?
Um, I have a big family, it's needing more space, and see, I can do it.
But your family, you, 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 your immediate family's living on the first floor?
Yeah, I live on the first floor.
And your extended family's gonna be on the second floor?
Yeah, I rented the second floor, yeah.
It's a lot of bedrooms.
John, is it cons, being considered a bedroom, is it a closet, if it doesn't have a closet, is considered a bedroom?
A bedroom is a, if it has a closet and a window, it's considered a bedroom.
How about the ones they're proposing that have, um, a closet? A window but no closet, closet. And the attic is one, and...
Yeah, there appears to be one without a, a closet. Is that intentional?
I'm sorry?
There appears to be a room, what appears to be a bedroom. If you see it down here, is that a bedroom? Right here, down in the lower right-hand corner of the, uh, second floor.
Yes.
But it doesn't have a closet. Oh, it does, it does have a closet.
No, I'm saying the one in the, like, in the back of the house? Yeah, that one?
That one. Is that a bedroom? Yeah.
Uh, let me... This is the first floor. Uh, if you can scroll down, Mr. DePries, uh, to... Eh, keep going.
Keep going?
Okay, this, this is the second and, uh, third floors proposed. Are you asking about, uh...
This one back?
This one, this one is an existing bedroom, that's the way it's existing, we're not doing any work there.
So it's, it's used as a bedroom, but it doesn't have a closet? And it will be used as a bedroom in the future?
It's...
Yeah.
Yes, um, my understanding of the building code requirements, not the, uh, uh, local regulation, but the building code requirement is that...
Could you talk a little more directly into your microphone, please, thank you?
Yeah, uh, the building code, uh, doesn't specifically require that to be a constructed, uh, closet in a bedroom. It can be a piece of furniture, like an armoire.
Okay, I'm gonna open this to the public, and, and if you guys are done, I just wanna remind, you know, as you guys will recall, we did something, we, there was something very similar to this in front of us at sixty-three Harvard, not too long ago. You guys should take a look at that, because we felt as a board that they were proposing too many bedrooms, and we did not approve that. Just, I was at sixty-three Harvard, John, am I right? Yeah, so sixty-three Harvard, which is just down the street. We had some concerns about what the size of what was being proposed there, as well. So, I'm gonna open this to the public, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this? I'm, I'm not gonna close the public participation portion of the hearing. You now have to go to the planning board on six-twenty-five and back here on seven-nine, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next case before us is gonna be twenty-twenty-four-dash-eleven, twenty-five Beacon Place, Medina. I'm gonna kill your name, I'm sorry. Kudaniz, Kudanizar?
That's close enough. Hi, how are you doing?
I'm well, you can introduce yourself with the proper pronunciation, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, that's totally fine. My name is Medina Kudanizar, I live on, uh, well, the house is on twenty-five Beacon Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts. And this is my brother, uh, our son Kudanizar, he's been overseeing the changes in the house, so, any gaps in my knowledge, he'll be able to fill in.
Okay, and is it, just as with the last case in front of us, this year, this is a special permit, we won't be deciding it today. You have to go to the planning board on June twenty-fifth, in this, right in this room, and then back here to the zoning board on July ninth.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't you tell us what you're proposing?
Yeah, so, you'll see on the left is we're, uh, proposing a driveway, um, so, it, it says driveway fifty-eight there. Um, so, we would like to, uh, we have about three cars, so we'd like to, um, utilize it for parking spaces for as much as it can fit, and, um, it fits two cars.
So the old driveway's already done, though, right?
Yes, it is done, and the reason why it was done is because this is our first home that we bought, and, um, we hired a professional, uh, to do the cement around the house, and he did not, like, he, we gave him the scope of the work, and he did not say that we needed a permit, so we truly just didn't know until we got a notice.
And so, and you don't have a curb cut?
Uh, we, can you...
Uh, sir, curb cut?
Put, talk into your mic, talk into your microphone.
Hi, uh, so my name is Arslan, um, Medina's brother. So, uh, the concrete, uh, curb cut, that's right, yeah, right there, so that was poured with, with the, um, with the driver, with the new driver.
So they poured, they created a curb cut that they weren't given, they weren't given permit for?
Correct, all that's, all that's poured. Correct, so all that was poured at the same time.
So you created a driveway and a permit, didn't, curb cut you didn't have a permit for, just, you know, just, you know?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, unfortunately, you know, without our knowledge, again, it's a reputable company that we hired, um, um, and we didn't know until we received the...
Got a notice that said, "You're not supposed to do that."
Exactly.
No, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things we didn't know about buying a first home, so...
Well, and now you're here, and we'll try to figure it out.
Yeah, trying to make it right.
Okay, are there any questions?
Is this a single-family?
Yes.
Does the garage belong to the house?
Correct.
Yes.
Talk into the, into your microphone.
Yes, it does.
How many cars you can put in there?
Uh, one small sedan, so like a Corolla, like, a Civic.
So you're not gonna have tandem parking, just one car?
So, in, inside the garage?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that, yeah, so in the garage, so there's, and how many, do you, so you have this, you're gonna park in the garage, and you're gonna use the...
The driveway, correct.
And how many cars in the driveway?
Uh, two easily, with space for a third one, but we have a total of three cars. Um, so it'll be two in the driveway, and then one in the garage.
And they need a special permit for tandem parking, even in a private lot?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. Guys? Okay, um, did I open this up to the public? I don't even remember.
Not yet.
Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? Okay, there being none, I'm not closing the public portion, so they'll have a chance to talk next week, next month. Um, twenty-fifth to the planning board, zoning board, back here on the ninth.
Okay.
So on the, for the, on the twenty-fifth, is it in person as well?
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth, okay, sounds good. That's all?
Yeah, I think that's it, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you, too.
We don't have to stick around for the rest, right, we're good to go?
You're all set. You're all set, thank you for asking. Four twenty-four-twelve, four-ten Beecham Street, uh, um, somebody open the door, please, can't close the door, thank you. Thank you very much. Four-ten Beecham Street, Thomas Reedy Esquire, special permit and variance seeking approval to construct a gas station, convenience store and cafe, including accessory office space and storage space, which does not meet the minimum requirements for off-street parking and minimum lot size. And again, this is the first time we're hearing it, and so you will be for, before the planning board on the twenty-fifth, and the zoning board on the ninth of July. So please, Esquire Midland, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone, David Midland representing the petitioner. Um, I have with me Robert Fidel, Fidel, who is the manager of Four-Ten Chelsea LLC, which is the record owner of the lot, and Dennis Darvo, who is the consultant who, um, has put this whole project together. Um, just so you know, Mr. Reedy was the original attorney on this, and I'm working with him on the project. He's from the western part of the state. So, I'll give you the very basics. Um, the plan has, the, the, plan has changed somewhat. It's a little more modest than what was originally submitted to the board. This was a former gas station and repair shop, uh, non-conforming use, it closed down, they removed all the fixtures, tanks cleaned the site, et cetera, and lost the benefit of the non-conforming use. The petitioner wishes at this point to re-establish a new, state-of-the-art gas station on the lot. Um, it will have, even though the, the proposal, I believe, says ten dispensers, it'll actually be six with an asterisk, which Dennis will explain. Um, and there won't be a cafe, it'll just be a grab-and-go convenience shop, convenience store. Um, we'll be looking for variances for lot size and, um, the signs, that's not clear to us at this point, but we can discuss it and find out exactly what's required. And then special permits for parking and, um, parking within the, uh, side, too close to the side lot line. Um, the only, the, the main confusion we have is how the planning department, uh, came up with twenty-nine spaces. It may change, may be reduced because of the cafe no longer being an issue, and also there was second-floor office space when the original proposal was made. The plans that were submitted don't have that second-floor office space anymore.
So the department will need some, an opportu, have, have to take an opportunity to, um, don't shut the door, please, thank you. Um, we'll have to take an opportunity to look at what your changes are, obviously, but the changes, what they require.
Correct. Correct. But, um, Dennis, do you wanna take over from here? And, um, John, we were talking about starting, I think, with site plan page four, which fairly clearly, that's, that's the one, right, Dennis?
Yes.
And if you wanna take over from here, do you wanna take this microphone and go up to the board?
Good evening. This is the current site, it's currently vacant.
Can you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Dennis Darvo, D-Square Consulting, um, four-ten Beecham Street. Currently, this is a vacant lot. It was, it used to be a nine-thousand-nine-hundred, nine-thousand-one-hundred-square-foot building, repaired facility, with seven dispensers in a square configuration up front with two park, with three parking spaces. It has been, as David alluded to, it has been removed. It is vacant lot right now. Uh, we're looking to do a twenty-five to twenty-six-hundred-square-foot store up in the rear corner. These dispenser configurations, as David mentioned, was, these four here are double-sided dispensers for gas. These here would appear to be three dispensers, but it's really only two. It's designed to have a truck pull in the middle, so they can fill both sides at the same time. So they're not double-sided, they're all single-sided, facing inward on each one. So there's really six, it's considered six dispensers, 'cause now you can only fill up two trucks here, and then the other four here. Okay, so just wanted to clarify that. This here are the underground storage tanks. These existing driveways are currently there after they redid the entire Beecham Street.
Is this only for trucks? Is it only diesel fuel, or is that...
No, no, these two lanes here will be high-speed diesel pumps for all the trucks in the area.
Mm-hmm.
These here will be, we call them three-plus-ones, three grades of gasoline and one grade of diesel for...
Okay.
A diesel car, or, you know, a small vehicle, right?
But just in the...
So we don't wanna discriminate against those little diesel cars. Uh, so we have those here, uh, which are double-sided, so you, you create four lanes for that, you can come out of either side. Uh, but these here are strictly for trucks, big trucks that have tanks on both sides.
And how do they get in and out?
They come in here and they leave here, or the opposite, the opposite way. Okay, that's why they're closer to the road. We have a truck turning radius, and I don't think it's in this plan, but it shows the trucks come in, even a tractor-trailer can fit in and then leave in the opposite direction. Okay? And these are, these are for the smaller vehicles over here.
When they parking, are they, are they extending out? Are they blocking the cars from getting out, like, you, how, how...
When the cab is over here, it, it comes to about here, the truck with the trailer on it, and then back here, it comes to here, and the curb starts right over here. So we center it, so it fits, you know, pretty much in. What we might do is, uh, even make it, we're gonna study the traffic a little more, and we may end up just making it a one-way. Shift these slightly a little more this way or this way, to make sure that even the longest truck, that's a, you know, it could be a, um, fifty-foot box with a, you know, twenty-five-foot cab, can fit if we shift them here, if they only come this way, one direction. You know, we just have to make sure before we do it, we wanna make sure, 'cause, trust me, if, if it's not laid out correct, the truck is know really fast, and they don't come back. So it's not to our advantage to not do it correctly, you know? Um, they just won't come anymore, where it gets out, and that's it. You know, we're done, as far as that goes. Uh, we propose parking over here and over here, and then again, the store is here, and it's one, one level, not two levels anymore. They, they had called for offices above for, to run his business, but we redesigned the footprint, there's a small office already on the first floor, so he's, he's fine with that. Little bit of storage. The cafe is just a coffee, you know, you grab the coffee and leave, a pastry and leave.
Like any normal, yeah, grab and go.
There's no, yeah, there's no tables in there or anything, it's like, like when you go into and there's a Dunkin' Donuts in a gas station, where you just grab your coffee and go. You know, there's no tables in there whatsoever.
Like a Seven-Eleven kind of thing.
Yeah, exactly. So, that's the layout of the, of the current property right now.
John, that seems pretty, uh, big change from what you originally, the way they originally proposed. I would think it would require some major, not major changes, but clearly parking and all that kinda stuff would change.
Well, the, the parking I put in the table came from the denial letter that was, uh, written by the, um, inspection services, which may have been the old plan, uh, and not the revised plans. I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe it was based off the old plan with the two-story, which added a lot of square footage upstairs, which we took away.
So how many parking spaces will, will there be now, with the new plan?
Currently, this shows ten.
Ten?
Yes. And I don't know, City of Chelsea does not consider parking at the pumps, even though everybody does it? 'Cause if so, that's twelve spaces right there.
I can't imagine. Well, you can't park in front of the pump and just stay there, so probably not.
Everybody does.
You wouldn't want that for your business, that's for sure.
Yeah, some towns allow these to be counted as spaces for parking, 'cause everybody fuels up and goes inside, so...
What would be the hours of operation of the gas station and the, uh, convenience store, or, or, or shop?
Because of the makeup of the area, we're looking for twenty-four hours, because the, you know, the, all the trucks that come in at, you know, three in the morning to do all deliveries and, you know, the produce and stuff, so we're looking to see if we can possibly get twenty-four hours so we can service them before they leave the area.
And there's not gonna be any, um, area for, like, repairs or anything like that?
No, no, no repairs whatsoever.
And no overnight parking?
Fuel and go.
No overnight parking?
No overnight parking, nothing. It's pulling your, for your fuel and you leave, that's it.
How many, I'm sorry, no, good.
Are you gonna have those, um, little, uh, air palms and all that stuff in there, too? They're like...
Excuse me?
Like when you tie your knee air, right? You put those little air palms, so you can put air, and some gas stations, do they have that?
Yeah, we'll probably put one in one of these spaces here, that, you know, you can fill up your tires if you need it.
How many employees?
Uh, employees, Rob, how many you have per shift? Two employees per shift.
Per shift, okay. Okay, do you identify yourself, please?
Robert Fidel. I'm the owner of, uh, four-ten Beecham, fifteen Denell Drive. The way it's laid out, we can put one employee per shift.
One employee per shift?
Yes. And when the, when the, when the transition is happening between shifts, they can go inside and, uh, fill up the cooler for like half an hour, so there will be like a, two employee for half an hour or an hour, and then the other employee will leave after, like, they clean it.
So...
Because some people, they clean the trash, some people, they fill the fridge, somebody has to be at the cash register all the time.
Right, so how would you know when you need two people versus one people?
So, let's say, let's say this is, uh, a twenty-four hour, I need three employees. If, if each one works six or hour, hours or five hours when they leave, the other guy will come, they will stay for one hour after the other guy shows up.
But you said when they're filling up, you need two people, is that what you...
No, when, no, when they fill it up, no.
Oh, okay, I mean, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
No, only one.
That shift change, there'll be an overlap of about an hour, so during that hour, the extra employee will be filling the cooler, that kinda stuff, yeah.
Oh, oh, I see, oh, I see, I see, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Somebody's at the register all the time.
I thought they were, I thought you said filling up the car, I'm like, that, okay, okay.
No, 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 it's self-service.
It's all self-service.
I understand, thank you.
The convenience store will be open overnight, so I can go in and get stuff, or just we have windows or...
So, so for safety, I would love to close it and do like a window, but, uh, it's up to you. But for safety, I like to lock, lock the door at ten, and just do, uh, gas, and if anybody need anything, we can give it through the window.
But I think that's, that's something that you should propose to us, because that's part of what we would decide. So if what you say is you want the gas station to be twenty-four-seven, even though somebody would be working there twenty-four hours a day, 'cause they'd be dealing with the gas...
Yeah.
But you don't want somebody to come into the convenience store after ten, you need to just tell us that.
Yeah, for, for safety, for like, uh, for safety, I, I would love that, but if, if this is a problem, I can keep the door open, whatever.
You need to tell us what you want, and then we can figure out if it's a problem.
Okay.
So if that's what you want, then you tell us.
So we, yeah, close the door.
If you wanna be open twenty-four hours, then that's a whole different thing.
Yeah, close the door at ten, but the, the fuel attendant will stay in, inside, uh...
He would stay, so it'd still be there, but...
Yes, and there's a window, if they need like cigarette, or they need like a drink or something, he can just do the transaction through the window.
So he wouldn't have to go out, nobody would be coming into the store itself after ten?
Yes. I, the only reason I wanna do it twenty-four hours, the, because it's all industrial, and it's all trucks, and you know Boston, after, like, after seven, eight, the trucks avoid going into the city, so if you go there around two, three in the morning, you'll see trucks, it's like morning time, you know? So that's why I'm trying to, uh, give it twenty-four, twenty-four-seven for the trucks.
No, that makes sense, I understand that. Other questions? May I open it up?
How long will it take you to get, have it ready?
Have it ready?
Yeah.
After everything's approved, probably, uh...
Uh, from, from approval to finish, probably about five months.
Five months?
Yeah.
So anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this?
Just one other note, um, this is not Mr. Fidel's first project, he owns approximately fourteen stations, so he's experienced, and he knows how to modify the business for the area, and he's very good at what he does.
Then make sure you tell us really what it is that will work best for your business, 'cause that's what we wanna hear. You know, don't, don't say what you think we wanna hear, or what you don't want. Tell us what you think would work, and then we'll work from there, okay?
We try, we try to avoid problems, that's all. That's why I like to close the doors at ten.
I understand.
'Cause...
But it's your business, and you sometime know how to avoid problems better than we do, so...
Yeah.
Um, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? Counselor?
Thank you. For the record, Leo Robinson, City Council, eighty-three Moran Avenue. I'm actually here in support of the project. There was an ordinance that didn't allow for this type of business, and actually, we changed the ordinance to bring it up to date what it should be. And those of us who travel and are on the road sometime late at night, and we need to get gas, and we're always looking to get a sandwich somewhere, so I think this would be a great fit, uh, for the city of Chelsea. That's why I'm here today in support of it.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this?
Todd Taylor, uh, Chelsea City Counselor, forty-five Nichols Street. I'm also in support of this, I, for all the reasons that Leo just stated, so I'll leave it at that, but, uh, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this won't be the only opportunity. Again, you're gonna go to the planning board on the twenty-fifth of June, and you're gonna come back here on July ninth. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. The next case is twenty-twenty-four thirteen, fifty-seven and seventy-five Palmer Street, James Christopher, for special permit and variance seeking approval to divide the lot at fifty-seven and seventy-five Palmer Street, and to demolish the existing garage and construct a two-family dwelling on fifty-seven Palmer Street, Lot A. Fifty-seven Palmer Street does not meet the minimum requirements for lot size, front yard setback, rear yard setback, and combined side yard setback. Lot B, seventy-five Palmer Street, does not meet the minimum requirement for off-street parking, lot size, side yard setback, frontage, and maximum lot coverage. And as with the last case, this one is not one we will be deciding tonight. You'll go to the planning board on the twenty-fifth of Jul- June, and back here on the ninth of July. Could you introduce yourself, please, and tell us about your project?
Good evening, folks. My name is James Christopher. Uh, I'm one of the principals of six-eight-six Architects with the business address of ten Forbes Road in Braintree, Mass. I'm here tonight, um, on behalf of the, uh, potential owner of fifty-seven Palmer, uh, and seventy-five Palmer. Um, the proposal is to construct a new two-unit townhouse-style building at fifty-seven Palmer. Um, these uni- these lots are subdivided already, however, they were owned in common. Um, so the, the subdivision creates violation at seventy-five Palmer. Um, if you go to the next lot, I have summaries of, uh, here's the site plan, which shows, uh, seventy-five Palmer currently houses a single family, and then, uh, fifty-seven houses a garage, which is the parking for that. There are currently two curb cuts on that lot, which we intend to reuse. Uh, next slide, please.
And are those owned by the same person?
So something has come to my attention tonight, they were. When I started the project, they were owned by Michelle and Ray Lewis. Uh, I understand now that seventy-five Palmer has been sold. Uh, the new owner is here tonight, he's in support of the project, but it is no longer owned in common. So I'm not sure what that does to this process, uh, but since...
I'm not sure what that does to the, can you, can you sell it like that? Well, so now it's, if fifty-seven is a standalone lot? If seventy-five has been sold, and...
I'll, I'll have to, uh, discuss this with the city solicitor.
'Cause it's a little...
Proceed.
Yeah, it, it, an interesting wrinkle to me, I was just made aware tonight. When I filed the application, it was owned in common. When I sat with, uh, Mr. McAtire at the building department, we went through both lots and determined that because they were already subdivided but owned in common, uh, this is the way that the application should be filed. Uh, I agreed as such, because regardless of whether they're owned in common or not, seventy-five, uh, Palmer is now in violation, um, based on, we have, uh, side yard, uh, front and rear yard setbacks for fifty-seven, and then seventy-five requires...
How did it get separated?
Pardon?
How did it get separated?
It was bought by a different owner. Fifty-seventy-five was purchased by a different...
So they weren't one lot, they weren't joined or...
They were two separate lots, but they were owned by the same owner, and under zoning purp- for zoning purposes, they merged for that reason. Now with a new owner at seventy-five, they're no longer...
They're not owned in common. As I see it, the violations need to be corrected, whether they're owned in common or not.
No, I, but it's just a matter of, I don't, I'm just trying to understand how, if they were merged...
I'm not aware.
By legally, how, that's why you have to, why, how could they have sold a part of it if they were in fact merged?
Right. So I have to discuss this with the city solicitor.
Yeah, I mean, it's, seems like you shouldn't have been able to do that. Yeah, it's the kinda thing you asked for before.
Seems confusing, right? Agreed.
Okay, keep going.
Um, so we need the relief on, uh, seventy-five Palmer and special permit for parking, minimum lot size, side yard setback, frontage, and maximum lot coverage. Um, in the, in my discussion with Mr. McAtire, when I was at the building department, we discussed that the option of creating an easement between our properties to create parking, so I think we can eliminate that parking violation. In my discussion with the new owner tonight, that was part of the agreement of the sale, is that they will obtain, um, an easement to create new parking, so I'll have to incorporate that into my application.
That has to usually happen at the same time.
Agreed.
That's what I'm saying, this is very odd, yeah, this is very odd to me.
Agreed. Uh, next slide, please.
'Cause he could just say, "I, I lied."
I'm sorry?
He could just say, "I lied."
These are the, the current existing photographs. So on, on the top left, we have the existing single-family home, which then shows the subsequent gar- the, the garage and then a budding lot, which would be raised, the existing curb cut, and then an aerial view that shows the lot. So we would, we would maintain that curb cut and we could create an easement and access off of our driveway between the buildings to create parking in the rear for seventy-five Palmer, which would eliminate that parking violation. Next slide, please. As we look at our proposed building, we are proposing side-by-side townhouses with a side yard setback on the left one facing of eight foot ten, nineteen feet from the front, and then ten foot eleven from the corner on Annesse Street.
Is this what you're proposing on fifty-seven?
Correct. There's no change to seventy-five. It's only in the subdivision as what happens legally to that lot when they're legally separated. So we are proposing two-car garage at grade with side-by-side entry seat. Enter into the front door with separated stairwells up. So if you go up to the second floor, which is the first living level, next slide, please. We have side-by-side living and dining. Each of these units is about fourteen hundred square feet with living space on the second floor. Next slide, please. And then two bedrooms and two baths on the third floor for each unit. Next slide, please. And then that's our roof plan. So the, the intent is to construct a new two-unit building as it's laid out here and iron out these wrinkles with seventy-five Palmer as well.
Okay.
No basement?
No basement. Slab on grade, parking interior.
Where do utilities go and the...
We'll be able to create a small utility room at the back of the garage and then the condensers and such will go out on, in the rear.
So I know, I don't quite understand how seventy-five fits it. So tell us where the easement's going to be?
So if we create the easement, my plan will change a little bit, if I may. Currently, we're proposing to use the existing curb cut here for our garage here. This is the driveway. This is currently the, a budding space between the two buildings. So we can create this eight-foot, it's like eight and a half feet on our property between our building and the property line and then four, four foot three to their property line. So we could create an easement here and then create some parking spaces in the rear.
John, is that, was that request for an easement taken into consideration as we were putting this together? Because it looks like we're, it looks like the driveways will be close to both, the driveway will be close to everything.
It was not taken into consideration. This was only brought to my attention this, this evening as well.
Okay, so, yeah, so you're going to need to, because that could change. I mean, I'm thinking, it's, I can't imagine that we're, you're not going to need additional relief, given what you're proposing on that driveway. That, you're probably going to be too close to both sides of the, of the land. So you're going to have, you're going to creating two additional non-conformities, quite frankly, on each, one on each side.
Okay.
I'm guessing so.
Driveways can't be within five, driveways can't be within five feet of side or rail lot lines, no, within five feet of a building with first floor or basement windows.
Okay.
So you, you'd need special real permit relief for that.
So what happens if this lot is sold? Because if they're not in common...
Well, that's why you have to have a permanent easement put on it when you sell it.
Agreed. I, I had, I had nothing to do with the sale and I'm just saying from a procedural standpoint. We would have to take a look at that easement. I think we can create it. I think functionally, we could make it work. I, I do think that we would have to, we have to obviously revise.
Well, because they, but you, you want to use that parking lot, that parking space to get to the back of seventy-five, which is the place that already exists. Is that what you said? Right, so you, so it's not, because you don't need it for fifty-seven. You just need it for seventy-five to get access to seventy-five's back.
Correct. Yeah, because the, the parking for fifty-seven would be here...
So you're the one who could say, "I'm just fooling," and not give it to them, because quite frankly, they can't get there if you choose not to.
Well, it's here on record tonight that if, if we, we would incorporate the easement should the project proceed. I mean, we have to, so...
I'm, I'm being sarcastic.
Of course.
I'm just saying it's that, the fact that it's, you, you're taking, you're basically straddling a driveway over both sides. But you know, you're at a position where somebody, neither, neither side has to agree to it because, or you don't have, fifty-seven doesn't have to agree to it because they don't need it.
Agreed.
I'm just being sarcastic. I'm just being...
No, I, I appreciate the concern. I, I was not involved in any of those decisions, so it's hard for me to speak to them.
I would want to see the deeds.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And what the deeds say.
That's what I said. It would, usually an easement has, easement is recorded with the deed, is it not?
Generally, it is. Yeah, typically, an easement would be agreed to before the sale in a situation like this, of course.
Yes.
Is an electric pole being the way where you're proposing as a driveway?
I'm sorry?
The electric pole is now.
There is a pole there that we would have to take into consideration.
Is it going to be in any way for the, where you're proposing?
We'd have to take a look at that pole. There is a pole that lands in that area. So we'd have to talk to DPW or see what the consideration there is. Or...
And you said there's already one curb cut, correct?
There's two curb cuts existing on that side, I believe.
Oh, there were already two curb cuts?
Yeah, because there's already a garage.
Oh, okay, yep. The garage was there.
I was looking for photos, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Right.
Are these going to be sold by a single, as a single unit or a...
After sale, condos, yeah.
Any other questions? Very open to the public? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? I was thinking you might.
My name is Arthur Els. I live at forty-five Palmer Street, which is right next to seventy-five. And by looking at this and looking at plans downstairs, you know, I, I, this was really three lots. And I don't know where fifty-seven came in, if it's not really sold yet. Because seventy-five was a lot, then there was another lot, and there was another lot, as far as what's downstairs. So my question is, though I don't know where that all came from, to be honest with you. I've been there for forty-seven years and I knew the previous owners. I think this is great, to be honest with you, because, you know, it adds to the, the area and everything. My real concern is, is water. We get flooded in this area on this street. And, you know, the, we come to the city all the time and they do what they can, but the big concern here is water. And now I just learned at seventy-five, if they got an easement, we never heard about a parking lot going in the back of that house. Now, I live right adjacent and as it is right now, water pours through from up on Prospect, through the yards and comes down into our property, and I have pumps going all the time. And I just want to know, you know, where does the wa- there's a well in the middle of that land, that I can tell you, right where that house is. So, geez, I, I just don't know what to say to you, you know? I, I, I mean, I think it's great, but my concern is where, you know, see seventy-five, my house is right to the left here. But the other houses up here, the water comes down and we actually have bricks on the, the seventy-five, so water will kind of go, you know, away from our houses, you know, and out to the street. And there are two new driveways and as I saw years ago on, across the street, they made them put a driveway in. If a driveway comes to, I never knew this, a driveway comes to the street, you have to have a drain there with a tank under the driveway to catch the water so it doesn't go to the street. I don't see that on that plan, but, you know, again, the concern here is water, because I'm telling you, we get flooded. You know, I've been to the state. I, I don't want to get off the track here, but in the highway, you know, Route one when it comes down, when they built our road, they put in these two little culverts under the highway. And years ago, I'm, I don't, well, some of yous here would be around. The projects and everything on that side used to get flooded. We used to have to get the ducts from the armory and get people out of there. Years ago, Franny Doris, who was our senator, God bless him, he had them jack these two big giant pipes under the highway, which relieved a lot of that problem. Just recently, you know, we, we were having a problem again. The other side of Palmer Street or the even side got flooded because the water can't get out. What happens when the street floods? It ends up in the middle and goes into the sewer lines. And what happens? The sewer lines back up into everybody's houses. So, you know, and Councilman Taylor here, we've been trying to, I actually went to the state and I got that culvert clean this past spring. But, you know, it's just something I'm trying to get to Senator D. Domenico to have that on a, a once or twice a year and make sure this grade is clean behind Columbus Street. Because when that's blocked, everything just backs up. But again, getting back to Palmer Street, that's the big concern here. It's weird, there's a, especially now, I'm just learning, there's going to be a parking lot in back of seventy-five.
Well, so are we. Did we know there was going to be a parking lot back there?
Okay, well, I, I, well, no, that's what was just said. That's what I'm...
Well, no, but that's what, that's actually my next question to Mr. De Priest.
The what?
My next question to Mr. De Priest was, the priest was, hmm, did we know there wanted to be a parking lot?
Yeah, I know. That's what I just heard was kind of proposed there a little bit, you know? So that, that's the big deal. I, I mean, it's, it's awesome. It's a beautiful-looking building and all that's fine, you know? But for the rest of us, we're concerned, where does the water go? And, and if this is going to create a bigger problem, what do we do? You know what I mean? What, what happens when our cell is get flooded? I mean, that, that's the thing, you know? The city says that the sewer line is a six-inch sewer line in that street. They come almost every day to check the sewer to make sure nothing's blocking it. You know, the city does what they can, but again, I know I keep saying it, but water is the problem here. So I'll leave it up to you guys, you know? That's the concern with everybody that lives there, so... Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Anybody else who wishes to speak on this?
Good evening. My name is Carlos Betancur. I live in fifty-four Palmer Street, which is right next to, you know, the building they're trying to build. And I am, I'm, I'm agree with, with Artie, he's my neighbor. We, we have an issue with the water, especially last year when we have a lot of rain. And we are between two hills, so pretty much we get the water from both sides. And that's something, you know, has been an issue. And I think we're doing more, you know, the, the sewer, get all this water from, you know, building a new houses, it's going to collapse more the sewer with, you know, more popul- more people in the, in the block, you know? I don't know if that made sense for you. Yeah, so that's my concern as well.
Thank you.
All right?
Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Monica Elias Soriana. I live at forty-four Prospect Ave. I'm actually a homeowner there, also some neighbors to some folks here. So right across from near Palmer, I'm a street over on Prospect Ave. I'm not really contingent on this project itself, don't really have any hard feelings. But I am worried, similar to my neighbors, in regards to flooding. I live in the in-laws of my property and have had experience with my basement being flooded, similar to other neighbors on Prospect and I know on Palmer. So that's a big issue with new construction that I am worried about in regards to this project. I want to be frank, just hearing you guys at the beginning about these two parcels and just kind of the city and just what it really is in regards to the deed, that is concerning. I did go to the open house. I want to be very transparent here. That, that developer, when I went to the open house, was very kind of peacock-like in regards to, "We're going to build eight, eleven units here." And I'm like, whoa, that's a lot. For people to come to Chelsea, I'm a long-life resident of Chelsea, just to come and just think that you're going to exploit our land here? No. So I just really want you guys to consider what is coming to our neighborhood. And please be very thoughtful of what you're going to approve in this parcel. So, you know, I'm not saying don't build anything in here. I think it has potential. But just to be very thoughtful in the plan and ask more questions. And in regards to flooding, I know that on Cook Ave, there is a neighbor that cut a lot of his trees. So we are getting a lot of the debris. When it rains, when it rains heavy, we get a lot of that dirt coming into our sewer. And it's just bad. So that causes a lot of our floods as well. And that dirt that accumulates in our sewers, on our streets, on Prospect Ave, and Cook is just near us too. So, you know, it is, I worried a lot on those regards. And if you don't believe me, come down when it rains hard. Love to send you guys pictures. But these are things that I am worried about. And my apartment has flooded in two occasions. I'm glad I have insurance. But other neighbors, I don't know, with their situation. But definitely, I'm not saying don't build anything, but just be cautious of what comes. And I would be curious if they are condos. What is the price point of these condos as well? All about affordable, affordability. So that's something too that I would question as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak on this?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Gonzalez. I'm one of the owners from seventy-five Palmer Street. And one of the questions I have is, I know he proposed like a space so we can park in the back, but what happens if it doesn't meet the space when you take the little turn on the corner right here? If I may? Around here, there is another building that's really close to here and it seems, and we have a couple stairs that come down. And I don't know if there's going to be enough space, if they, if you guys allowed that project.
Well, we, this is the first we've heard of there being a driveway or a parking lot, so we can't answer that question.
Okay, that was just one of my concerns. That's about it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this? Wait, I know there's somebody who wants to speak. No, no, you're, you're next. Dennis is, he can go after.
Fred Wilkins. I reside at one oh five Springville Avenue, which is at the end of this area. I also have a four-unit building at the end of Anisi and are concerned as well as others is the water. My some pumps run twenty-four seven. I also represent the Five Two Club, which is on the opposite corner of Anisi. And although we only open from noon to six o'clock, but there is a parking concern there. And Palmer, Palmer, if they park on both sides of the road, it, it, it is difficult. It's one lane going each way. So beside the, the parking and the water, it, it is a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All I want to say...
Got to say your name if...
Sorry, Todd Taylor, forty-five Nichols Street. So everything that the, the neighbors have said is absolutely true about the concerns about the water. I don't know if you guys remember, last year, we had torrential rain and it, it flooded a family out on Columbus. And we had to like, you know, you know, the, the government shut down the house because of the, of the, of the, got into the oil tank and it just went everywhere. So I, they've tried to fix the problem or at least mitigate the problem there with the sewers and the, and the, and the culverts underneath the, the highway, as Artie was, was mentioning. But it's still a problem. And the sewers are an ongoing problem in Chelsea, so just be aware of that. And the, the parking also is, I mean, these are all good points. Please, just please take into consideration all of that when you're making your, your decision on it. You know, I understand that Chelsea's kind of a non-conforming place and that we, we, we don't change the rules because we want to try to make things work. But there, I think there's a limit to that too. And, boy, they, you just better make sure that things are done right so that it doesn't, you know, exacerbate the problem with the, with the, with the water. Because it's just, that whole area really gets it bad. And, you know, there's, there's not, not a whole lot we can do, so you just got to be careful. That's all I want to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, would the DPW weigh heavy on, on the issues that they were talking about because of the water and sewer flooding?
I am waiting for a, a report from the DPW, which I expect will come before your next meeting.
Yeah, so I assume that, that would, yeah, we'll just wait for that.
Did you say you wanted to have something else, sir?
Well, I was just concerned, Arthur Els again, forty-five Palmer Street. Where the sewer line in such things would be hooked up? Would they be on Palmer Street or would they be on Anisi Road?
Yeah, that's not us.
Is that something we don't know yet? All right, no. I can answer some of your questions about water, if I may, but if you had another...
Well, and Jonathan brought up a big thing as far as trying to put parking, and I didn't even notice this. But when you go down the end of that driveway, the corner of the house is here. And the way, if you were standing in front of that driveway, may I go over here? I just want to kind of... The land for this house right here, which is on Anisi Road...
Wait, can you turn so that we can't see you? It's here, it's not us.
Uh, where am I here?
Why don't you go on the other side? Go the other way.
On the other side, okay.
That works, thank you.
But the area between, the way this way, this is a, a stone wall right here. And the, the way this distance to here, what is that, like ten feet? I can't see that. I think it's thirteen feet. But there's a stairway there. And like Jonathan was saying, I don't know how you could come out and, and make a right to go down into that driveway. Do you know, that's a, that was really going to be a parking lot that we don't know anything about. Do you know what I mean? That's the first time that was ever brought up.
Just so everyone's clear, it's the first time it was brought to my attention as, as I walked into this room. I didn't know either.
Okay.
So I, I just...
Well, you guys better figure it out before the next meeting.
Um, yeah, exactly. I'm just, the, the easement was something that I think is, is, was an option that we could try to work to make a viable solution. But we'll have to work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the water concerns, we have not gone through engineering yet. Should this project be approved at the zoning board? We would do a full set of site planning, construction engineer drawings from architectural, structural, civil, and we would go through the whole plan. You know, the abutting sites that are elevated above us, I cannot do anything about the water on that. It's coming on to our site. From our site and from fifty, seventy-five Palmer, if we were to modify the parking there or change that site at all, we would be able to add cul-de-sac systems, which would be able to make the sites take, retain, and manage water internally. And that's relatively new addition to the building code. Years ago, when these sites were originally done, they discharged onto the street, so your driveway pushed the water down onto the city street. I believe that our site, we can make the water conditions better. We can make our site manage the water on our site at fifty-seven and seventy-five through stormwater retention, cul-de-sacs, those sorts of things. I can't affect the abutting sites. But that is definitely something with... But that is definitely something with regrading and Caltech systems, we can improve the function of those things.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is now closed because you have to go to the planning board on the twenty-fifth, back here on the ninth, and we will, this public hearing, the public participation portion will remain open until then.
Before you close, I just, let's make a statement. If these parcels have already been divided legally, some of the relief that you're gonna need, some of the relief that's posted in the report will not be needed. We may have to re-advertise this because it's a change.
Okay.
If you are looking for an easement that's going to be on both properties and on your property, you too will have to seek relief because you can't have a driveway within five feet of a building and within five feet of a side yard, so you may too have to file for special permit as well.
But it also sounds like you're not sure you even want a driveway there, so I think you need to figure that out, so, because it sounds like you're not sure you could use a driveway there, you could get by, and you yourself said you're not sure that you can get around that corner, so you guys have to figure that out.
Who's using the driveway in the garage?
So, currently, the fifty-seven supports seventy-five. That's the way that garage that exists there today is four-seventy-five Palmer.
Okay, but who's using it, seventy-five? Seventy-five use the garage-
You're using the garage?
And the driveway?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I use the garage. I have to use the garage. Because I'm taking care of the preacher's home, so I use the garage.
That's all right, that's all right. But, well, okay. But there won't be a garage there anyway, so-
Thank you very much for your time, folks, I appreciate the discussion, Mr. De Priest, I'll be in touch on this, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last but by no means least, our friends from Green Roots. Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-nine, fifty-nine Pearl Street, Roseanne Bon Giovanni, for modification to allow for the use of the kitchen space for food production by third-party users. So, last, when you were before us last time, we agreed that this was a major change.
Yes.
And so, we appreciate you being here, it's been advertised as such.
Great, thank you.
And luckily, gave us all the opportunity to think about it.
Awesome.
So, let's go outside, guys.
I think you, did you say you saved the best for last?
Of course, that's what I said. Last but by no means least. And so, why don't you introduce yourself formally, and also tell us now, because this is technically a new hearing, what it is that you're proposing to do in the property?
Okay. I'm Roseanne Bon Giovanni, the executive director of Green Roots, we're located at ninety Everett Ave, Suite Ten in Chelsea.
And I'm Joanna Emerson, I'm the teaching kitchen coordinator at fifty-nine Pearl Street in Chelsea.
And we are here in front of you today to ask for permission to allow us to open up our kitchen for external vendors and users who might want to use our space on a minimal and infrequent basis when we are not using our space for our teaching kitchen purposes.
Okay, so, when, it was, tell us what it, like, what do you want them to do? Who is it going to be? What kind of, you know, what kind of vendor are you talking about? How often do you need them to be there, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so, we've had a lot of interest from different vendors, but the only vendor that we're currently interfacing with is a co-op from East Boston, they're an employee-owned juice company that currently only functions out of their house through Cottage Law, and they've been given the opportunity to get a larger contract from somebody that would only do the contract if they were in a more commercial space. And so, they've been looking around for kitchen spaces, and they request use of our space. I think it was, our agreement was eight hours a week, so not very frequently, probably two days a week maximum in the mornings, so earlier, probably starting at eight AM for a couple hours a day, which currently does not interfere with any of the programming that we're running, most of our programming is in the evening and on the weekends, and our programming that is during the day is for special groups that come in once a month or twice a month, such as the senior center, Harbor Cove, and the intergenerational literacy program, but they aren't frequent enough to interfere with the production schedule, so.
So, my thoughts, when we talked about this before, and you've had the chance to think about it, which we don't always have, is that how do we make this work for you guys, and how do we make it work so you're not coming in front of us all the time?
Yeah.
When, you know, today is vendor A, maybe tomorrow it's vendor B, that's irrelevant to us, but I think there are certain parameters-
Absolutely.
-that we can put around it that would allow you guys to operate with flexibility and would not require you to unnecessarily come before the board, so that's not so, for things that wouldn't be so strict.
Absolutely. So, I think what we'd like to ask you for permission is to not have to come in front of you for every single vendor that we're, right, that approaches us, but to-
Talk a little more directly into the-
Sure, sorry, to ask you to grant us permission to use the space in such a way for, you know, you could decide X amount of vendors, X amount of hours per week or per month. Our primary focus will continue to be a teaching kitchen, where we're having programming on a regular basis for the community at large, whether they're learning how to bake bread, make healthy breakfast, a number of different things that JoJo and her team have put together. We want to continue to implement all of that programming and continue to grow it. This will help us on those off times when we're not using the kitchen, to bring in a little bit of revenue, continue to make sure that the kitchen is open. We want folks in the community to see that the kitchen is there and is open all times, we don't want to see a vacant building or an underutilized building, and so, this would help us to offset some of our maintenance costs and operating costs for the teaching kitchen. And so, I think what we'd like to ask for permission is for you all to allow us to do this, to extend our kitchen for these vendors, these small-scale vendors, a certain number of hours per week on a, you know, annual basis, and we're glad to come back and, you know, come back in front of you if you have concerns or have heard, you know, complaints from the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, and I also, though I know it's not what this might be the case, but I think it's great that you're also helping a small business, you know, a small entrepreneurial, you know, to sort of help support that, so I think-
Absolutely, and by no means is this meant to be for a large-scale catering operation or a large-scale restaurant, this is really the small startup entrepreneurs, like Joanna was saying, that we could really help to get them-
Like an incubator kind of thing, a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the other thing I'd like to clarify is, by no means would this be the end goal for a lot of these vendors, a lot of folks just need a place to go that is in between their home and a larger-scale kitchen.
And they're hoping that they'll get out of your kitchen if there's something more-
I think so, having worked in industrial kitchens, we do not have the storage space that they would need for like a long-term business plan, and so, I think the idea is learning how to get their feet under them in our space, and then being able to grow from there, either into a brick-and-mortar or a larger commercial rental space.
So, this is technically, you know, it's still a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it up in a minute, but do you have any, guys have any thoughts?
No, I don't think so, I think it's a good idea, I mean, I think, like you said, you just wanna keep to your mission, Roseanne, of being a teacher and not saying, you know, not allowing it to get caught that you could say, hey, we can make a lot of money doing this, you know, we're gonna kick you out, we're gonna make a lot of money, I mean, that's against the mission and being a nonprofit, you know, so-
No, definitely, and-
So, says the accountant, pay attention.
Yeah, exactly. No, and our grant, our original funding that made this project possible was through MGH Brigham, or Master General Brigham, and the intent is to teach folks, bring folks together in community to eradicate health disparities in Chelsea, and really teach nutrition and to live it. And so, our, you know, our bread and butter is, we're growing at the urban farms and gardens, harvesting those crops and vegetables, bringing them over to the teaching kitchen, and Joanna's teaching people how to make healthy foods and meals out of those, and so, this is a small way of bringing in a little bit of extra funding to help support the kitchen's operations and to utilize the space and support other entrepreneurs in that community, but no, we're not, we're not in the business of renting out our space in that way.
Okay.
Do you work on the weekends?
Yes, yes, in fact.
Saturdays and Sundays?
Right now, Saturdays are our primary day that we're running programming, yeah.
So, essentially-
Sorry, Joe, we do have specific programs, so we'll have guest chefs, for example, so Ellen Rovner is coming in next week, two weeks? So, there are guest chefs who will come in and like teach a one-off, so Ellen Rovner's coming in a few weeks to teach traditional Jewish cuisine. Yahia Nor is coming in a few weeks to teach Somali, and so, that might be a Saturday, it might be a Sunday, it might be a Friday night, it might be, it's just dependent on the community-
But that's totally in keeping with your mission.
Yeah, exactly, when the guest chefs are available to teach community members and to engage folks.
So, essentially, what we will be doing will be simply sending out guidelines relative to time and hours?
That would be, well, not so much, yeah, my recommendation would be to craft guidelines in such a way that we protect the mission that's there, we make sure that we are also consistent with what this was originally approved for, and it doesn't also come back to us in a needless way for, you know, because we, you know, it's A versus B, when A and B are essentially the same. But, you know, so in my mind, as I thought about this, I have like a number of different things that I think would work, but why don't we open it up to the public too, and then we can, we can talk about that. Is there anybody here who wants to speak on this? Please come up and give your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name's Jennifer Hassell, I'm the executive director at the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to advocate on behalf of Green Roots. I think what they're suggesting is really something that is in need. We are currently registering a lot of the at-home businesses to take place in local marketplaces, and there has been inquiries about potentially a kitchen that could be utilized to potentially help start up their business or grow their business, and something on a very small scale to stay within the mission that they have established, so I just want to support this and be able to advocate on behalf of the small at-home business that might be able to utilize the kitchen as they're proposing it now. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak?
My name is Monica Elias Soriana, I live at forty-four Prospect Ave, also disclosure, I work with Green Roots, but similar to John, I think in support of businesses that work from home, right? I have a friend from Chelsea that, I won't disclose her information, but has a business from home, I think this would be a good space for her, she's been doing it from home, and I think just people like her, and there's so many people just like her that use social media platforms, and I think it's just a safe space, right, to launch their small businesses, whether they're already doing it in the same spaces or not, I think this is just a good platform to, you know, utilize folks like JoJo that has so much experience and other folks and staff, so I'm in fully support and hope that you are too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna close this, so John, what are the thoughts from the planning department?
Thoughts, the planning by the seminar that you already expressed, the concern here is that there is a desire to work with Green Roots to support, help support them, and this is one way of getting them some financial support, but also to preserve, again, the main mission, which was approved by the ZBA, and to limit the impact on the neighborhood or on the traffic or infrastructure in that area.
So, do you have any recommendations for that?
I provided you with a document that would restrict the number of hours to ten hours a week, that would ensure that this is only secondary to the primary use, and the primary use being the teaching kitchen. All use shall be interior of the building, no use outside, outland loading of supplies, equipment, et cetera. Outside vendors not utilizing any vehicle larger than a van to transport the materials, and use not earlier than seven AM, no later than nine AM.
And I would add to that, that I would like to see no more than one vendor at a time at the local, you know, I don't, I'm not caring, you might have multiple vendors over the course of the week, but one time, there's only one vendor, that avoids traffic and stuff.
I also would prefer that.
Does ten hours work for you?
Yes.
Okay. And again, I'm saying that, I'm saying this because that's another one of those things that can come in front of us, it's, you know, say you think, oh, now I need ten, but maybe in a year I'll need twelve, you know, if you think twelve is what you want, then ask now, so you don't have to come back again in six months.
That's a great point, I think that ten is sufficient, if you could grant us fifteen, that would be great.
So, what do you think?
I was thinking more twenty, I mean, as-
Well, I think that becomes too much, I think twenty, twenty becomes a half a week, and I think that that's a little much, I think that seems like half a month.
Yeah, but they're open, didn't you say you're open six days?
Well, we can wait up to twenty hours, there's nothing that says it can't be up to twenty hours.
I would think, rather than having them to come back just for that, I mean, I would tend to think-
No, I'm okay with that, it's an up-to number, I mean, you know, you guys make it work.
Well, it's just putting it out there, so if they need it, they have it, but if they don't-
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
What do you think?
I guess I'm fine with twenty hours and one vendor, again, but it's like, if, okay, you know, you have the twenty hours, you're gonna let twenty hours, and now it's half the mission, you're, do you know what I mean, that's what, that would be my own concern, but I guess twenty hours with one vendor is really not-
No, I don't mean one vendor for those twenty hours.
I, no, I understand that, no, I understand, but it's like, okay, now it's half your time is-
I thought twenty hours was a lot, but I'm happy to go.
Well, they control that, and they can say, okay, you can come in here ten hours or five hours or whatever you want, or whatever they need.
I mean, the work week is forty hours, but that doesn't mean that our kitchen is forty hours, because it's not just us who are there teaching classes, we have other guest chefs who come in just for two or three hours, right? And so, it's our, like, work week, as Joe said, is longer than forty hours, because it's not just us, it's, you know, contracted worker, chef.
I guess it doesn't have to be a consistent ten hours or fifteen, because some weeks that might be that there's, someone's gonna come in and get a big juice supply to get in, so they're in a couple of times.
And in all honesty, we may not use twenty hours, but it's nice just to have that flexibility to not have to come back for-
Would you rather have a lesser number?
No, 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 and I'm fine with that, it's just, being a nonprofit, being now you're being in business versus your mission, right, so that's what I'm just expressing, but twenty hours is fine at one, at one vendor.
We're not go, if I haven't gone into the for-profit business in the last twenty-nine years, I'm not going into the for-profit business through this.
I know, but, you know, I know.
Yeah, but you know, Roseanne, you're not, this isn't about you, this is about Green Roots.
True, yep, absolutely.
I'm just concerned that twenty hours eats into the mission too much.
That was, I would have, I would have said twelve to fifteen, but that would have been my thought.
Yeah, so just to be clear, the only vendors we're considering are ones that are looking to use morning time, which right now is not heavily scheduled for us, especially in order to make our programming accessible, a lot of it is in the evenings for folks who work so that they can then come after their jobs, and then the morning programs are flexible with these community groups, just because they have more availability, and so, having a vendor come in, say, from seven to eleven, five days, if we were to max out that twenty hours, would probably not interfere with any of the programming we're currently running anyway, and that would be the maximum amount that we would ever consider, but, yeah.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, then we'll go to the next one. Okay, so, do we, do we just vote to, do we just do make a vote to accept that based on the conditions we've laid out? How does that-
You would have to make a motion.
A motion to accept the modification based on these criteria.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the modification with the conditions that were stated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a motion to, what?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We do, yeah.
It was so long ago, motion to adjourn made by Arthur, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye.